Thank you all for coming tonight. Please allow me to call the January twenty-second meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission to order. Ms. Don, if you please call rule.
Ms. Baker? Mr. Dungus?
Here.
Mr. Eliff?
Here.
Mr. Gothard?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Henson?
Here.
Thank you. Um, looking at tonight's agenda, we've got the four items in front of us on the agenda and approval of the minutes. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, I motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
All second.
Ms. Baker? Mr. Dungus?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes, thank you. Um, we also have the approval of last month, or actually November's meeting minutes on tonight's agenda. It looks like we have quorum to approve them.
No.
We don't. So we'll table approval of those minutes until we do. Okay, the first item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for a zone change request, case one, two thousand twenty-four Anderson, for the property located at thirteen oh three, nineteen twenty-one, nine, or twelve seventy-nine and twelve sixty-seven Eight Mile Road, um, filed on by Josh Blatt on behalf of John Henry Homes, on behalf of Eight Mile Development Company LLC.
Thank you. This is a zone change request from C, single family, to DD, planned multifamily, uh, for the properties that were just stated on Eight Mile. The proposal is for the construction of six buildings with, um, six units apiece for a total of thirty-six units and fifteen street, off-street parking spaces in addition to the garage spaces and the driveway spaces, uh, landscaping and lighting. The proposed overall density is seven point oh nine units per acre. Um, what is permitted in the, um, C zoning district is seven point two six units per acre. So a little bit on the site history, and again, you've seen this before, is, um, part of the future land use change, but there were single-family residences on the property and those have since been removed. Three of the parcels were approved for a future land use change back in two thousand nineteen. Um, at that time, there was a proposal for, this was a future land use change from single-family to transitional residence, and at that time, there was a proposal for twenty-four units, condo units in a three-story building and then thirteen single-family lots. Um, this did not move forward, and then it was decided in two thousand twenty-one to move forward with the sixteen single-family lot subdivision. This was known as Hummingbird Court, and this was approved by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission, but ultimately not constructed. Most recently, in September of two thousand twenty-three, there was an open house to discuss the proposal before you, and, uh, that plan has not changed. At that time, the applicant moved forward with a future land use change request in two parcels of, of the, those that are mentioned for this complete zone change, and again, that was to change from single-family to transitional residence, and this ultimately was approved in December of two thousand twenty-three. So specific to this zone change request, Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission held a public hearing on January the fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, this did not pass at Hamilton County. There was a vote of three yeses and one no, and because of that, um, it did not pass because they did not have the majority of the quorum that was there. We do not have the minutes. Um, Sarah was at that meeting, so if you do have questions regarding that meeting, she can answer those questions, but the discussion at that meeting was favorable, but the vote turned out to be three to one. So, and since we have three cases tonight on the agenda, I'll go through the presentations fairly quickly. The staff reports, there are some out in the hallway, uh, for you to follow along. If we run out, they are on the township's website, um, but if you do have specific questions while I'm giving the presentation, feel free to, to stop me. So this is the site in question outlined in the darker or bolder red. This is Eight Mile Road here. Just off the map is Cherry Lane, uh, or the homes. This is Cherry Lane right through here, which is Zone C, single family. This is the zoning map. All the yellow is some type of single-family zoning. Again, the current site is Zone C, single family, Cherry Lane. There is some blue here which is planned office. This is the back of the Dr. Rogers Dental, um, offices, and then Eight Mile Road is, uh, Zone C. This is the proposal for the site in question, a private drive with the six buildings that was mentioned earlier. Each building would contain six units. Um, the building facing Eight Mile would have, uh, their front doors facing toward the street. The other, in the rear entry garages, the other buildings have front entry garages, and again, these are all private drives. One parking spot in the driveway as well as one in the garage, and then off-street parking spaces would be, uh, parallel on the private drive, parallel parking spaces. There's a proposed T-turnaround with a detention basin, um, toward the west in, in the rear of the property. This is the topography map that shows a little more clear where the detention basin is proposed, and this is the landscaping plan. Um, landscaping proposed along Eight Mile, also a buffer proposed between the rear of the units in the development and Cherry Lane. Um, there is an area, um, that is proposed to be remained and, and the natural vegetation along the periphery, periphery of the property here to the north, um, and then along, uh, the detention basin. This is the lighting plan. I know it's hard to see, uh, but it is compliant with township zoning, and these are the elevation drawings of the, uh, units. This would be the building that would face Eight Mile, again, with the front doors facing Eight Mile and the rear entry garages, and then, um, these are the elevation drawings of the other buildings, the front entry garages off of the private drive. They were proposed to have a mixture of building materials. And then these are some of the drone shots that we took earlier in the year, obviously, um, but not much has changed on the site. The, this is Cherry Lane, um, Beechmont Avenue off to the left of the site, uh, or from this photo. This is looking north along Eight Mile Road. This is where one of the houses used to be. Again, just looking back at the site in question. This is looking, these are the homes on Cherry Lane. So with a zone change, um, we look at the adopted township plans, the first being the Anderson Plan, which is the township's comprehensive plan. Um, the findings, staff felt that it is consistent with the future land use map that was recently changed, uh, a portion of it to, um, transitional residence. The, um, which the definition is provided here in the staff report as well as in the, on the PowerPoint. Um, so staff felt it was consistent with the future land use map. It's consistent with the Housing Chapter, and the articles of the Housing Chapter are noted in the staff report as well. Um, and then it's also consistent with the, um, zoning, DD zoning district, except for a front yard setback. The DD zoning district does require forty-foot front yard setback, and these are proposed to be at thirty-one feet, and we'll address that later. Staff is supportive of that variance because of front yard setback of thirty feet is consistent with the C zoning district, and that's what the surrounding zoning is, is C. So these would be actually set back consistent with the current zoning of the property. Site planning and township design guidelines, again, felt that it was consistent with this. A transitional residence man, means a transition from the more intense commercial uses on Beechmont to the single-family further north on Eight Mile Road. This development itself, um, does have sidewalk accessibility along Eight Mile Road and to Beechmont Avenue. Um, it's also, it submitted a landscaping plan that provides a buffer to the single-family homes on Cherry, as well as some of the properties to the north, and keeping the existing vegetation. Um, also, uh, the, as far as the architecture, the building heights are consistent with what would be normally permitted in a single-family zoning district, uh, which is two and a half stories. These are two stories, uh, and, and although they are attached, um, they're a series of building, and the density, overall density is consistent with the underlying zoning district. As we stated before, the lighting is also compatible and compliant. Anderson Trails Plan, they are providing a sidewalk along Five Mile Road, which is consistent with our Trails Plan. This connects up to Beechmont Avenue, and the Tree Committee also submitted a letter, um, in support and, um, recommended, again, providing the buffer, um, and keeping as many mature trees as possible, which could also be identified during the final development plan if this were to be approved. So staff's recommendation was approval because the zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's in substantial conformance with the zoning resolution, except for the front yard setback is noted, um, with thirty-one feet versus required forty feet. The essential character of the neighborhood would be, would not be substantially altered. Um, again, in comparing to the underlying zoning, if single-family homes were built here, it could be built to almost the identical density as what is proposed, and the, the actual density is just slightly, I mean, smaller, but it's, it's identical to what could be permitted there with single-family homes. Um, staff is of the opinion the health and safety of the neighborhood would be maintained, and that the site provides the applicant to realize a reasonable profit, not necessarily maximum profit. This is the variance that was mentioned, and again, staff is supportive of the variance. So if approved, um, staff recommends at least the two conditions. One is that the parcels all be consolidated, and number two, that a future cross-access easement to the northern property line for emergency and pedestrian access be shown on the final development plan, and I did not touch on that, um, so I apologize for skipping over there. This was brought up at the Regional Planning Commission meeting. Um, they felt that it would be beneficial for future connectivity if, for some reason, there were any type of development to the north because of the stub here, uh, whether that be for pedestrian access or emergency vehicle access. So they felt that an easement would at least allow for future connectivity if, for some reason, the property to the north, not saying that it is proposed to be developed, um, but to take that into account now. So staff was, um, supportive of that condition and also included it in the township's recommendation. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Paul. At this point, the commission's gonna, um, ask some questions of staff. We'll get to the public comment in questions section in a little bit. Thank you. Um, Ms. Pam, did you have any questions for staff? Uh, Mr. Dungus?
Um, it was mentioned that there is a variety of building materials, but I didn't see it listed. I mean, it looks like brick and some type of siding, but I didn't see it called out anywhere. I didn't know if there was anything else provided.
The, the, um, I think, I'll let the applicant speak to that. They did mention that, uh, I think it was, it was in one of their materials, so I will let them respond to that.
Okay.
It may have been during the future land use meeting that it was, um, it was discussed.
Uh, okay, and then the recommendation for the parcels to be consolidated, what's the benefit of that?
With, um, residential development, the, since these are proposed to be rental units and, um, they're not going to be, each individual unit is not going to be parcelized, so currently the parcels, um, run through where some of the buildings are proposed, so it would be all under one common ownership, under one parcel.
Okay. That's all. Ms. Eiliff?
I think we're getting some bleed over in our PA system again, or we're all hearing things, but that's okay. That looks like fun, actually. I have a couple of questions. Um, Paul, the north buffer where you're talking about maintaining the natural vegetation, though Paul was leaving, sorry, or Sarah?
I'm listening, I'm sorry, I am listening. The north buffer.
Well, when I drove out there and I couldn't quite tell where that was demarcated, but I was looking at the neighbor's driveway, but the natural vegeta, yeah, where it's indicated there in the northwest, it didn't look like there was very good natural vegetation there. Am I not seeing that, or, and it doesn't look that deep either. Is there decent natural vegetation there? I was just kinda, it's kinda weird that they-
I can go back to the drone shots, so it's gonna be back over in this corner here.
It's not, it's not somebody said, okay.
And I can let the applicant speak to that as well.
Yeah, because, of course, a lot of times it's kinda not great, and then when they get the equipment in there, it pretty much makes it not, it makes it tough for those trees to survive, so I guess we'll see what they say, and-
All right, if there's bleed over, let me mute the wired mics and then I'll be right.
I, what? Oh, okay. It's been a while since we got that. I'm gonna ask Sarah while you're doing that, Paul. On Cherry Lane, which I drove down when I was looking at this the other day, which was kinda weird, cause that's a private street, I guess, is, I guess this is not gonna have any, uh, impact on that? Is that on, is that on somebody else's property, or whose property is Cherry Lane on? Do we?
The residents of Cherry Lane maintain that private drive.
They maintain that.
They are responsible for that.
Okay.
So no, it won't, this will not impact Cherry Lane.
I got you.
In terms of that road.
And then, uh, couple, a month, not that long ago, a couple of months ago, we heard this about the plan amendment, and it went to the Board of Trustees, I assume with the similar drawings that we had, and the board recommended, or they didn't recommend, they actually changed the land use plan to accommodate this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the last question I had is on the traffic impact study, cause I'll still, I still think it's a tough place to, to dump a lot of traffic on. In fact, Sunday, when I was trying to get out of Cherry Lane, which was not the busiest time, it was tough getting out of there, but I, uh, we didn't have a traffic impact study, which is not unusual, but I saw comments from the county engineer that they need to do an intersection site, a distance study for the driveway. Do you know what else the county engineer's looking for, for a traffic study there? Has there been a traffic study? What are they, how are they gonna get in and out of there?
Take that, or you want me to? Okay.
Floor it.
Is that, is that still working?
I hear you.
So, and again, I think the applicants have their traffic engineer here, so it may be best to hear from their traffic engineer director.
I see a civil engineer sitting there.
Yes, is that correct?
He probably knows traffic.
Your traffic engineer? Okay.
They have a traffic.
Um, but essentially, the applicants resubmitted the study that was presented to the county for this, for Dacey's Landing, Hummingbird Court, and updated the number of units. The county determined that a new traffic impact study was not required because of the number of, the increase in the number of units did not warrant a new traffic study.
Oh, I got you.
And no, it, it didn't require any improvements to be made.
Did the county accept the recommendations of the traffic, or should I ask them?
Yeah, well, yes, they said that a new, that no improvements were needed.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question. The private drive that goes to the north, has public safety looked at that for fire department access and ease of turnaround and things like that?
Yes, and again, this is just for future planning purposes, which we do all over the township. Um, there's only thirty-six units here. It is a private drive, so it's not required to have an additional emergency access, but for future planning purposes, we did feel that it would be beneficial if a new development were to go in the, in, up to the north of this, even just for pedestrian access. That now would be the time to get an easement in place.
Thank you.
It's not required, um, at this point in time.
Um, regional planning's denial, I understand it was three yes and one no. Is there any more to discuss there, Paul? Was there anything specific that stood out, or was it more about-
So I'll let Sarah, because she was the one that was representing the township.
Um, so the Regional Planning Commission discussed the application similar to you all, and when they went to take the vote, it was, their board's typically made of seven, and they had four present. So three voted yes, one voted no, and that does not meet their quorum. Um, there was no reasoning on the no provided, and we have yet to receive minutes from Hamilton County Regional Planning.
Yeah, I couldn't find any there.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions, so at this point, we could ask the applicant to come up, um, to address the commission, and please remember to state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Josh Blatt with John Henry Homes, and I'll go a little bit out of order with my notes just to address the last three topics that you guys asked. First, on the regional planning, the conversation was very, very positive. Um, it, we, we were all caught off guard. The, the no came out of nowhere. It made no sense because the, the dialogue was positive from everybody there, from everybody on there, from the back and forth, so, uh, there's really no reason for that single vote. Um, but the three, we did have three positive votes. Um, question of materials that you just asked, uh, it's a mixture of, uh, stone siding and dimensional shingles, and you'll see when we get to our elevation pictures, though, all along Eight Mile and the sides of the buildings that are visible from Eight Mile have stone, so it's a really strong concentration of stone to get a super upscale look, and then the shingles are a dimensional shingle. I don't, Paul, if you can pull up our rendering, um, or the, uh, and you can show, we've got a rendering on there to kinda give you an idea for it, but, um, and then on the landscape question, one of the positive, one of the most positive feedbacks we got even from regional planning was on landscaping, and our design on landscaping was very, very heavily oriented towards the perimeter properties. One is we wanted to stay off, um, along the, the properties to the north. We kinda held our road back. We kept the, uh, a buffer on the sides. One of the problems with the original single-family development that was there was it literally went to the property line and destroyed the entire buffer going down the northern property line, but we really, if you look at our landscape plan, what should be in your records, um, and also it's on one of our slides, you can see there's a very, very heavy concentration of landscaping all along the perimeters and behind our buildings along Cherry, so, um, let me get back to, so you guys have heard, obviously, this, we were here a couple of months ago on the, uh, land use plan, so a lot of this stuff is redundant, and I apologize. Uh, I'll try not to be too redundant and just hit the high points of the things we think are important for tonight, um, but we, as you know, that this came, it was the land use plan where we did discuss, oh, thanks, we did discuss this. This was, uh, supported here, and then again, by the trustees and by regional planning. Uh, our goal is to, uh, take this property and put in thirty-six high-end units, um, and we think it'd be a really, really great use for the property. It's a transition between the business district that's there and the housing districts to the north. Um, there were two, as you heard, this project, there's been multiple projects have been tried on this site. None of them have worked for it. They just did not fit the type, the ground, the topography and the use. One was for a apartment project with structured parking. Uh, another was for sixteen houses, which just did not, it did not work on this site. Uh, our company, um, the next slide, is John Henry Homes. We're a thirty-year-old company. We are based in Cincinnati. It's, uh, myself, my brother John, who's right here. Uh, we're one of the largest privately, like, there we go. Uh, we're one of the largest privately-held builders in Cincinnati. Uh, we've been doing this for thirty years. Um, we've participated in lots of home shows, Home Rama, uh, Lifestyle Home Rama shows. Um, we've both been on the board of the Home Builders Association of Greater Cincinnati. Uh, I served as its president, as a representative to the Ohio Home Builders Association and the National Association of Home Builders. Probably a little bit more important about us and our experience, uh, we've also participated in the development of other multifamily projects. Um, if you've been to downtown Loveland and been to the Graders, Loveland Station is one of our projects there, which was a mixture of retail and apartments. Uh, it's a hundred and nine units. Uh, in downtown Milford, we did, uh, a project called, uh, Riverwalk Flats, and we took an abandoned lumberyard backing up to the river, and, uh, it's been very successful, and, uh, both of these projects were really, we worked with the cities on these things to make them happen. Probably most relevant and most similar to this project is Mason Oaks, which is a forty-four unit townhouse project we did in downtown Mason, and this was a transitional project from their residential area to their downtown, which they're desperately trying to, uh, still get developed, but, uh, that's very similar, and it's really what we're trying to do here. That's what we saw, this, we liked about this site, is we felt it was a, uh, very similar project. Um, what is our plan? So our plan is thirty-six townhouses. Um, it's a high, highly visible site. Um, the townhouses are very, very upscale, uh, with a mixture of six buildings, each two stories, and if you look at these things, a key thing about them is they look like residences. It's a very residential-looking building. It's designed to look and feel like a house. In fact, most of the people coming to live in these are coming from houses. We get a lot of empty nesters, and they're downsizing, but they wanna stay close to their family and friends. They want the amenities to their house, but they don't want the responsibility of plowing their driveway, cutting their grass, taking care of the maintenance, so, and their expectations are very, very high-end. Uh, all the units have three bedrooms, two and a half baths. Each unit has its own garage, its own driveway, and its own private entrance. Uh, the finishes for our units are very high-end. They include quartz countertops, uh, LVP flooring, stainless steel appliances, microwaves, refrigerators, uh, second-floor laundry, which is super convenient, tile baths, smooth ceilings, upgraded faucets. Um, again, we talked, we talked earlier about our exterior design. Our exterior design is, uh, extremely important to us. Again, these are people coming from large, upscale houses. You can see the elevations here with the stone on facing Eight Mile. You can see all the units have porches on them. Um, so I don't wanna be redundant and keep talking about that. We did, on the units facing, one thing on the design that we took into account, and Paul touched on it, which is with, with the variance, we wanted, instead of having a bunch of curb cuts on Eight Mile, uh, we wanted, this is why we put the garages behind the units, so that we can give it a residential feel that really help and enhance that transition as you get to the business district. So that's why there's, all the units have front entry garages, except for the six units that face Eight Mile. Uh, our projects, we're long-term holders of our projects. Everything we do, we own, we keep. It's, uh, so having high-quality tenants, good-looking projects, well-maintained projects are very important to us. Um, one thing to touch about, we talked about landscaping, uh, on the perimeters. All the units will have landscaping in front of them. They'll have, just like a house does, this will have a monument at the entrance, uh, irrigated entrances, and professional landscaping, professional landscape management on it as well. Uh, traffic did come up, um, so just, um, this is, you can see the landscape area. The picture's a little bit distorted, unfortunately. I don't know why it's doing that, but you can see all the landscaping along the perimeter of the property, though. So traffic has come up quite a bit. Obviously, we had a, a public hearing with the neighbors before we even started this process, and we heard that, look, we, we understand the issues with traffic. Uh, you know, Eight, Eight Mile's busy. Um, it was, it's been busy for a long time, and it's, you know, obviously, at some point, uh, the county will make improvements to it. I think when Speedway, if Speedway does something, it'll be improved, but there is a traffic study that was done for this site. It was reviewed by the county, and they basically said that traffic coming from this project is really inconsequential to what's going on in that site. So we understand the issue. Um, obviously, for us, having people who are renting units here, um, we, we, we care about it. It needs to be something accessible to them, and we wouldn't put this thing here if we weren't comfortable with, uh, our residents being able to get in and out of the project. So with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
Mr. Dungus?
Um, you mentioned the building material again. What is, what type of siding is it?
It'll be a, a vinyl, a vinyl siding, but it'll be a thicker vinyl siding that, uh, we typically like to get a richer color, and so you've gotta go with usually a thicker or more high-end siding to get that.
Okay. Um, what's the anticipated sale price of the units?
So, uh, these are for rent, and they'll be twenty-two, probably twenty-two to twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
Um, and then in the application letter, it had stated that the previous plan of the sixteen single-family homes was not attractive to builders due to the grade issues and the sewer, so how is that easier in this scenario when there's more units?
So the previous plan had a lot, for the single-family, that, that plan was shopped around by, in fact, we found out from one of the larger builders in town passed on it, called us and told us about it. I think every builder, it was listed, the multiple listing service, um, every, every builder in town looked at and passed on the site. The, the grades were tough. It's hard to get the sewers on it, especially if you have basements. Um, if you have basements in the back of the way the development was done, you needed, uh, ejector crocs or force paint on it to make them work, and then the home sites were tight and compact. It just, it was not attractive, especially for the price the houses would have sold for, so.
Uh, that's all I had.
Thank you. Ms. Eiliff?
Uh, yes, I had a question too on the building materials, so you answered that, but, um, I still have a question about it, which was, instead of using vinyl, um, I think a cement board siding would be an improvement, and also I would suggest, and see if you would entertain if this is approved, rather than just doing a wrap around the corner on the visal- than just doing a wrap around the corner on the visible, if you would consider doing a stone wrap around all the buildings. I think if you took that plus the cement board siding, that would be an improved product. Do you have any concerns with that?
So, the, it's interesting that, so the cement board product over time, if it's not maintained, obviously, it's got to be painted and kept up over time, where the vinyl...
It doesn't have to be, right? It comes with the color baked in, doesn't it?
So, we, you can buy it with the color baked in, but either way, it takes, it does, even the baked-in color does take maintenance. So, the richer sidings, there tend to be, the thicker sidings tend to hold their colors better, but...
So, is, so would you not do that if we required cement board siding?
If we're, obviously, we're required to do it, we would obviously...
I was just asking. We'll see if that's a big deal to anybody else or not. It may not be.
But on the, on the stone issue, we did make a point on all the visible areas from the perimeter, that to be sure that the stone is visible on Eight Mile from the sides of the buildings, so...
If I drove down the, if somebody could bring up the site plan, if I drove down the entryway and I was like back by Building Three in the back, would it have stone wrapped around the side?
It would not.
Okay. I see one there. That's how I understood it. I understood the, the, only the ones up front were going to be like that.
Right.
My understanding's correct. Okay. And then I'll go back to the question I asked Paul, and I'll ask you. On the north corner, there's just some, there is no landscaping shown, and it says "natural vegetation" or something like that. But it doesn't look like the natural vegetation is great out there. What exact, and I don't see any, like, markings on the plan about, you know, existing trees or, you know, or protecting existing vegetation. What is going on there on that north corner? Because otherwise, I do agree with you, it's landscaped pretty well around there.
So, our goal is, first of all, to maintain as much of the existing vegetation as we can. Obviously, it helps us, and it helps the neighbors.
Yes.
If there's an area in the north that we need to revisit, if we need to add a little bit there, we can certainly take a look at that and see. I thought we had it pretty well covered, and the feedback we've had was positive, but I'm happy to, you know, if we need to add a little bit of vegetation there, our submit trees there, it's not a problem.
And the last thing is about the traffic impact study. Did you bring with you, usually with a traffic impact study, the county engineer, after the staff person reviews it, they'll produce a letter that says, "We're in agreement with the recommendations of the traffic impact study." And I didn't see that in the materials. Do you have that?
We don't, but I think we've submitted that. I think Paul, you have that, don't you?
It was an email that was sent by the county. I did receive an email from the county engineer.
And they were in agreement with the recommendations? Okay. Okay, thanks.
So, we actually went back after the, after one of the meetings with the concerns with traffic. We went back and talked to the traffic engineer and said, "Can you reevaluate this?" They reevaluated and went to the county with it.
Got it.
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
I think some of the concerns about that sort of north corner would be extended to me also. Driving and looking now, of course, there's, you know, no leaves, but something to assist the neighbors at that location, I think would be very helpful. Have you thought about any sort of screening on the west side? You know, you've got the T-intersection, you have all the grading for the new detention, but there really, there's no landscaping really on that west perimeter at all, or even, you know, between the west property line and the units itself. You know, I think for that sort of location, being nice to sort of create some more in landscaping rather than just ceded turf.
Like I said, I think we're happy to review any landscaping. I think that, I think sometimes when you, once they're built, it's also easy to walk them, but we can obviously work with the staff or whoever's appropriate if they feel like there's some areas that need additional landscaping. It's, obviously, based on the amount of landscaping we put in here, that was our intent, was to really cover as much as we, as possible and to create a nice barrier between us and the neighbors, so, a nice screening.
I think those two locations, everything else is pretty well-covered. Your landscape designer or landscape architect, and I notice white pines, and white pines are really great, they grow really fast, but then they sort of suffer after that. What's sort of your landscape architect's thoughts on white pines, because I see a fair number across the property?
They put them in, so they must like them. But, so, we're there, they said, we're the owner, we'll be there for, we're there for the long term. We use, we hire professional companies to maintain the property and take care of our landscaping and the turf and everything, so we'll maintain that. So, as trees die, we replace them if they do, so...
So, you'll maintain this for the life of...
We will maintain this for the life of the property, yes.
All right. And then I would concur about, you know, maybe an alternative siding solution than vinyl, even though it's thicker, it still has the vinyl look. So, you know, as a miniature siding does, you know, have a more upscale look than vinyl. Thank you.
Thank you. The only question I had left was also regarding the landscaping. You mentioned that the foundation landscaping's going to be done after construction. It's not really shown on here, but will that provide an opportunity for any decorative trees, like cherries or, you know, dogwoods or something? Or is, are you intending that just to be shrubs and flowers?
Typically, we do shrubs and flowers and like mulch beds, like just a typical residential house landscaping package, so...
Yeah. And that's sort of what I'm getting at, is I think it's sort of echoing, is the perimeter looks fantastic, but the interior looks a little sparse, and it's a lot of housing frontage. So, that's really my only comment. It's more of a comment than a question.
So, I, when it's done, I think, and maybe if you take a drive through the Mason Oaks site, you'll see that, again, the people coming who are renting these tend to come from houses with, pretty large, upscale houses. So, we've got to do a good job on the landscaping, because otherwise, they're not coming, so... But I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we can welcome audience members to come up and remember to direct your questions to the commission and not to the applicant or staff, and we'll address them one at a time. So, if we have someone in the audience who'd like to come up at this time, please do. Remember to state your name, address, and any affiliation to the project you might have.
My name's George Sullivan. I live at 1294 Eight Mile Road. And on them's proposal, sorry, this piece of property was never intended for multi-appartments. It's like, they thought about that before, a couple of years back, and it got shot down. And that's why they sold the property to the new guys. And then they came in with a new proposal to put apartments and stuff in there. But with the way, with the traffic on Eight Mile, and the way the traffic backs up from Beaumont all the way down past my house, you know, it'll back up a couple hundred yards. And it's constant like that, especially Monday through Friday. And you said you went there on Sunday, and you seen what was bad. Imagine now, it, you know, when, actually, there's traffic in the morning and the evening, and the business hours, it's just totally ridiculous. And to put that many units in there, it's, the property's never meant for that. I've lived on that street, on that corner for 70 years. And now that the last guys that come in there can't build on it, then the new builder's going to, the new guy's going to come in and try to build on it. But it's not meant for that. They want to put a road in and put the apartments around there. A friend of mine that works for, while he's retired from the Southside Police Department, or the Fire Department, he came to the last meeting with me downtown and said, you know, "You can't get a big fire truck up and down what they got planned." He said it'd be next to impossible to try to drive a fire truck in there. So, if there was a serious fire in there, what are you going to do? You know, that in itself is a danger to the people that live there, and how about the people that live around there? It's just, this piece of property was never intended to put that many units in it. You know, you could put the 20, they can, if they didn't put that in there, the last guy that was planning on putting 20 houses in, and he didn't do that, and then that's when these guys came in and got the property. And if you even, if you put 20 houses in there, you got so much, compact in such a small area, it's just, it's, actually, it's dangerous. And the amount of traffic that comes up and down that street now, it's totally ridiculous. Anybody that lives on Eight Mile or travels that area, it, when it comes down to where people are coming to and from work, you can't move. And to have traffic backed up that much, what are you going to do if something serious happens, if there's a serious fire? People's lives are going to be in danger. It's just, this piece of property was never intended for that use. It's like, they don't live in that neighborhood, they never came door-to-door to ask the people of the neighborhood what they thought. You know, they may hold one of these meetings, but most of the people that live near me are like 80, 90 years old, and they're not going to come to these meetings. And to them, it's like, to them, it's totally ridiculous to, the people that live all the way, from Eight Mile, from the corner, all the way down to where they want to build. It's just, it puts more people's lives in danger, not just the people that live in, that's going to live in this new complex, but the people that going up and down that street. And the surveys on accidents, they don't give you a number. I've seen three accidents within the last two months, right there in front of my house, but then they never come up with a correct number from Anderson Township. How many accidents have actually seriously happened here? You know, why don't we have those numbers? And there's no numbers actually given to us on how much traffic is there on Eight Mile going into Beaumont. They say, "Oh, well, our survey looked at, and our guy said this." Well, what's the numbers? How many cars is there? What, how many cars was intended to go on Eight Mile and Beaumont at that intersection? Not just as our guy said, let's have serious numbers. How come Hamilton County don't give us serious numbers on how many cars coming up and down Beaumont, and how many were actually, would it be acceptable and safe for the residents and the people traveling in that area? There's, there's none of that. It's all missed, just put to the side. Don't, we don't care about that. And there's things that should be looked at that actually, to me, it's not even addressed in this. The safety of the, the people driving up and down that street, and the people that live on that street should be a priority. Not if we could stick another big housing unit in the back corner on this piece of property. They go, you know, even if they put like 15 or 20 houses in there, that's going to even add more to the area. And if anybody has ever driven on Eight Mile and Beaumont in that area, they know this, it's like the traffic's crazy. It's one of the busiest intersections at Cherry Grove, at Anderson Township. There, you can't hardly name two other busier intersections than Eight Mile and Beaumont. It's just, we were not, I mean, the way it is now, it's just not equipped to carry that much traffic. It has nothing to say bad about this builder. He may build great houses and great apartments, but this piece of property was not meant to have a gigantic 35-unit property in it. Even if you put 14 or 15 houses in it, that's to be planned.
Thank you, thank you. We've heard the same thing a couple of times. I appreciate it. But I do think we need to move on to more comments. Remember to state your name, address, and any affiliation you might have.
I'm Linda Harrison, and I, we live at 8588 Den Allen Drive, which is in the Summit Estates there. Go by that, this area all the time. First of all, I see the signs that were there to publish that we're having these meetings. Well, there's no sidewalk there. You can't read those signs. I had to get out of the car each time and take a picture so I could see the signs, so just for future reference. I mean, there's, there's nowhere to walk, walk there. I had to go through that, that, all those weeds and everything. So, a lot of people, he was mentioning, a lot of people just don't even know these meetings are happening, because they can't even read the signs. But also, there's no sidewalk there, and his, I don't think they were going to put a sidewalk in. And then I'm wondering, how are the front of these townhouses going to level with the houses over here on this side? I think it's west of them, no, north of them? You know, there's those, that row of houses still there on that side of, are they going to be way in front of them? You know, I can't tell from these things. Or are they going to be equal with them? And will the sidewalk go by these houses, too, to extend it a little bit? And then some of these drawings are beautiful, and the apartments look great, but I've seen those before, and then they don't get all the, I mean, there's trees on this side of the apartments on Cherry Lane. There's no trees on Cherry Lane right now there, unless they're by the houses. There's no trees there at all. They're just all gone, you know? So, I don't know about those things. And then I worried about the sewer system. There was a, there, it's not made for all that many houses there, and there's not going to, I mean, once you get into that place, I couldn't tell if they were having any kind of landscaping. It's, I don't know if you've seen 12 Oaks on Clough Pike? Oh, it looks terrible. You've actually gone in there and driven in there, and that's not something we need here. This isn't a neighborhood, you know? This is not the city, inside the city. This is a neighborhood. And maybe if there were fewer ones with landscaping around, like, what's that one, the Commons on Wolfangle? You know, they have those townhouses that are owned by people. They've done such a nice job, I know that's a long time ago, you know, with landscaping and that, and making it look nice, and making it look like a neighborhood. And most of the people that I, all the rumors that are going around, people aren't happy with this. Plus, all the other things, I worry about the sewage, like they were saying about the, could, could the fire engines even get in there? What about the poor people on Cherry Lane? Are they just going to see the backs of these buildings, you know, in a few bushes? I don't know. But otherwise, most of my questions have been answered, so that was good. But their rentals, yeah, it's expensive. We have, how many rentals do we have now? The one's going up at Five Mile, the one's over by Nagel. They're going to put more patio homes there. What's going on Wolfangle? I don't even know what's going there. Do we really need any more rentals? Because how many of the rentals are already rented in the ones at Five Mile, or the ones that are up by Sem Manor there, sort of right behind the, this recycling center there? How many of those are even rented yet? You know? I know townhouses are different, and townhouses maybe are nicer than apartments, but I don't know. You know, yes, our, our population is aging, but a lot of us will move out to wherever our kids are. You know, they might not be right here in Anderson Township. So, you can't always count on that. Maybe it would be great some other area, but I, I don't know. It just doesn't seem like a neighborhood thing. But if you haven't seen 12 Oaks on Clough, and I know that's a different county, go, go look down there. And that's just, it just doesn't look good. And I don't think people would be happy if this is going to turn out that way. That's all.
Thank you very much. I do think we had some questions in there regarding the elevations lining up with the neighbors with the frontage setbacks lining up with the neighbors, the sidewalk, and how far that'll be extended north and south, and the trees and screening along Cherry Lane. So, I don't know if the applicant and Paul want to take turns answering some of these, or Paul, if you want to knock out. I think we have a majority of answers.
Do you want to hear the rest of the questions from the audience, and then we'll hear if they have the applicant?
Yes. At this point, if there are any other audience members with questions about the project who would like to come up and ask those questions, please, you're welcome to do so. And as you come up, remember to state your name, address, and affiliation, if any.
I'm Jay Moore. I live at 1311 Eight Mile Road. So, a couple of things I'd like to address, I know I've spoken to each of you before. So, I'm going to cover a couple of points already brought up, if it's okay. First, northwest corner, we talked about landscaping. Do you mind going to the elevation plan? I'm sorry, the grading plan? One right there. And so, I assume you all can see this northwest corner. You'll see, in addition to the landscaping, and there's trees right on the property line are not shown. There are some there, there, they can't remove them, they'll tear utilities up, so, they're there, they're just not shown. But on the grading plan, I think a little bit more I want to point out is, there's about 10 feet of elevation change in that one corner. It's not shown in the landscaping plan, so I think that should be addressed a little bit better. If I could bring up that, that building, this building in the rear, there's a pretty significant fill there. Two questions brought about impact on Cherry Lane, and the lady right before me also brought it up. I know it's hard to see, but, you know, Cherry Lane right now, they're getting, and I brought this up in the land use plan, they're getting orphaned. So, the idea with this zoning change is a combination from retail, commercial, to single-family. So the idea with this zoning change is a combination from retail, commercial, to single-family. We have a street with like twelve homes, and we're just orphaning them because now they're stuck in between the commercial district and a multifamily district. In addition to that, and it sounds like each of you took your time and went out and drove the property, which as someone that lives there, really appreciates, you sat on the, you walked down Cherry Lane, and you look at the back of these homes, they are attractive, but I mean, your views now, like, wow. I mean, that, that's like, like that with vinyl siding. And, and we just leave them there. And she also said, I'm not sure that's the, what we want to do as a township. Third, and she also brought, another item came up, is changing the land use. I've been a resident for thirty-one years. Never been more disappointed in my life with Anderson Township trustees till we did the land use plan. Two of the trustees told me, we got to do it for the money. One of the trustees told me that I'm old, and I don't like change. Rentals are the way of the future. Get on board. Just to be honest, transparent, never more disappointed in my life in that response from our township. So, a couple of things I really want to address. Those are items that were brought up while I was sitting there waiting, made some notes. I want to talk about three things, two things actually now, I talked about Cherry Lane. One, and I'm going to phrase these around rules versus reality. Start with the easy one, traffic. There's a study that says it's not going to impact traffic, and I'd say it's a community in whole, that's true. Not going to make any difference to people out on Beauchamp, not going to make any difference to the people down on Clough, not going to make any difference to people on Five Mile. It's going to make a huge difference to the people that live within two miles of this proposed development. I mean, it's just, that's reality. The report will say, no, it doesn't make a difference because it's not, because there's tens of thousands of cars go a day. What's another thirty-six, or forty, or fifty? You know, that's the difference between another two or three sitting in front of you, and you try to get out of the, your garage in the morning, or out of your parking area, or sitting at a stop sign. So I think that's reality. The other thing I want to bring up, which, idea of reality is versus, rules versus reality. Everything else around at home, we saw a slide, it's all yellow, it's all single-family homes. So I mentioned prior presentation, north, south, east, west, there's nothing but single-family homes. It's all you see. It's all yellow. And those lot areas from the zoning have to be, and I'm sorry, I don't have the presentation, six thousand square feet, right? That's a requirement. That's seven per acre. Everybody tells us this right here, same thing, seven per acre. Of course, the difference is, and I'm sure you all have this memorized, the difference with this, seven per acre, these all have yards. Everyone have a setback on the right and the left, front yard and backyard, right? They have a requirement, how many can be on a road. They have a requirement, how many the driveway has to be. So the reality, yes, somehow you might be able to get seven of these units on a perfect lot, but to compare that single-family home to this, and say, oh, well, it's the same, I mean, I, I think that's maybe less than accurate. Also, since the site plan's up, the last thing we'll look at, the drainage area in the back, which I brought up prior in the land use plan, that lot is one acre. You take one acre from the total development, leaves four acres. Now that density goes from seven per acre, and mind you, that's seven per acre, not like a single-family, like around every place else we have to do in the neighborhood. Now that density goes to nine per acre, right? Now, I don't know what that math is, twenty-five percent, twenty percent more dense than everything around it? So, and the last thing I'll leave you with is, from the zoning board, this, DD, I found it interesting, because obviously I'm working hard to minimize the impact of my neighborhood and myself, quite frankly. I'm reading, and you all have a really tough choice, because the one thing I read about the DD, DD zoning requirements F, general requirements, page thirty-three. The proposed plan shall not be approved unless ATCC, you guys, Anderson Township Zoning Commission, specifically makes a finding that the development will be harmoniously related to the overall neighborhood. That's your all's decision to make. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Floor is still open for audience members to come up and ask questions regarding the project. Just remember to state your name, address, and any affiliation you might have.
Okay. Susan Moore, I'm at thirteen-eleven Eight Mile Road. And this is more just clarification for me. The first time I heard, we did not go to the Hamilton County Commissioners, and they talked about the easement going north? North, right? North. So, can somebody clarify that for me? And I bring this up because we've been there for thirty-one years, and the homes that were there, they were rentals. And our driveway, it is shared, and it's to the north, but invariably, those renters would frequently just drive through the side yard and use our driveway. Now, why? I don't know, but because there was always grass, there was always landscaping. But they would do that. And so, you know, over the years, we've put a fence, and we've, we've tried various things, but when you bring up an easement, and when you bring up the easement for fire safety, that concerns me because I don't want thirty-six units with the ability to cross over and use our driveway. It's a gravel driveway. Thirty-six units can make a lot of damage to it. So even pedestrians, and rentals, you know, I'm a homeowner, so I take pride in our property. A rental is different. My, my daughters will tell me I'm, well, quite frankly, being a snob about it, but it's our home, and we have a stake in, in our community. The renters do not. So the standard may not be as high. But could somebody explain to me about the easement that was discussed?
We'll add that to the list, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open. If there are more audience members who would like to speak and ask questions about this project, you're welcome to do so. Seeing none, we'll now attempt to address the questions that we, that we have been asked. Let's start with the applicant. If you'd like to come back up, I'll bounce some of these questions back to you. A lot of them were answered previously, but I'll try to restate them as best.
Jim Watson with McGill Smith Punch, who's the engineer, might also be able to clarify a couple of questions as well, so, based on.
Address, thirty-seven hundred Park Forty-two Drive, Suite one-nine-zero-B, four-five-two-four-one.
So some of the questions were just regarding the, the way that the project, the frontage setbacks mirror the other ones along Eight Mile Road, and similarly, the elevations match, if they're compatible with them.
So, first of all, all of our units are two-story, just like the houses. So it's the same height as resident, any residential house construction would be. So height-wise should be the same. I think in, I believe it's in the staff report, talks about the front, the houses that were there before us. I believe our buildings are the same setback as the houses that were there, and it's consistent with the existing housing that's there already. So we're not any closer to the street, or any farther back from the street. I think Paul could, could clarify that, if I'm accurate. So just be.
When, in the staff report, we were looking at the adjacent homes. This house here, you can see, and then this house here is actually set back a little bit farther, but across the street. Correct. Do you want to explain? Okay. And then on Eight Mile Road across, these are generally around thirty feet. So Cherry Lane is a little bit different because Cherry Lane is a private drive. Typically, measurements are taken from the right-of-way. Cherry Lane, they're taken from the edge of pavement, but there are some non-conforming setbacks on Cherry as well.
What you're saying, Paul, is those setbacks are actually closer.
They're, they're compatible with the majority of the homes in that distance, yeah, in that particular area.
There was a question about extending the sidewalk beyond your project area.
And I can show that here, too. So the sidewalk is shown on this plan, probably better than the landscaping plan. So this is the sidewalk here. It extends along the proposed development, and then ties into the sidewalk just south of Cherry that extends down to Beauchamp Avenue. It stops at the property line, and at this, which I can explain the easement as well, if now is appropriate time to do that. So regional planning, in their staff report and in their recommendation, they, as well as we, always look at future development and the opportunity to make connections, whether it's pedestrian connection, emergency access, or even future road connections. So in this particular development with the stub, the idea is that if the property to the north were to ever develop in the future, whether it's five years, ten years, twenty years, never, now would be the opportunity to request an easement be made in this particular area. The easement would only go to the property line, and it would only be an easement. They were not suggesting that the physical improvements be made to the property line, and the township cannot force any adjacent property to tie into this without going through a zoning hearing. So that's not proposed. The actual connection is not being proposed. It's just that, an easement on paper for future planning purposes only.
And then I think the last question that we had in the list here was regarding the buffering between the rear of the southerly going century. And if you want to pull it up, I can skip.
And we actually have heavy landscaping. You can see it on the plan there. It's heavily landscaped there. So we took that into account. That was actually really important to us.
Yeah, I think the comment was, is that currently, there are no trees along the north side of Cherry Lane, and this plan proposes for future use to the.
Yeah.
With that, I think we can address the questions that we received tonight. So thank you very much, Charlie. Commission, if it makes sense, we can open it up to discussion amongst yourselves, unless you have any more questions for the staff or applicant at this point.
I had a couple, I think, based on what some of the residents said, but I think they've been answered probably, but I'll take them to Paul for, to answer quickly. Somebody was concerned about fire truck access. There's a T turnaround at the end of that. I presume this is distributed to the fire department, and they are.
Correct.
Concurring with the design.
Correct. It was distributed to our fire and rescue department, and Assistant Chief Hurlinger did review the plans and didn't have any concerns or.
Okay. And then somebody also asked if there's sewer capacity. Normally, that's kind of a baseline thing that needs to be established. Did, do we know that there's sewer capacity? I presume they wouldn't be.
Yes, we did receive a letter of sewer availability from MSD.
And then, and then somebody commented, one of the neighbors, that they couldn't see the, the zoning sign, but isn't it true, the zoning sign's not even required. That's just something Anderson does in addition. Most places don't even put out signs, that I'm aware of.
We, we've had that concern brought up in the past. I guess the idea is to at least make people aware, and then all the information is on our website. So hopefully, if you do see those signs in the future, you'll go to our website and be able to, or contact staff at the, at the township, because it is hard while you're driving, if there is no sidewalk, we agree, but it's, it's almost impossible to get a large enough sign where everybody can see it. So the idea is to bring attention to your property, or to bring your attention to the property, and that a case is being heard, and hopefully contact the township for further information.
Yeah. And then lastly, that easement question, that easement, if they were to grant that, is in favor of the northern property. In other words, it allows the northern property to use their property. It doesn't command that their property gets to use the northern property, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Amy, do you have any?
Yeah, and forgive me if I just, I just missed it. I, I didn't feel like I heard a lot of detail about the impact on traffic, like that it was sort of, oh, it'll be fine. But to the gentleman's point, I, I feel like we didn't have details about what the impact would be.
So this was discussed probably more in the future land use hearings, and it is mentioned in our staff report. But I try to explain this, because traffic is always difficult to explain, and what is required of an applicant, and what is not required of the applicant. So anytime, Hamilton County, or, Hamilton County is the authority that maintains Eight Mile Road. So that is their road, and they are, make the decisions about any improvement. So when a development is proposed on a county road, it is routed to the county engineer's office, and they determine whether a traffic impact study is required. Since a previous development, a traffic impact study was required for that development, this proposal updated the numbers for that. The county determined that it was in comparison to the previous development, and that no further traffic impact study would be needed. And the previous traffic impact study determined that no improvements were needed because of that development. It doesn't say, though, that traffic is bad on Eight Mile, or traffic's bad at Beauchamp and Eight Mile. But it, it doesn't say that this development has to correct all traffic issues in the neighborhood. It's saying that their development does not require additional turn lanes, or additional signal, or something. It doesn't warrant it because of this particular development.
So the, so in effect, they're not really answering the question about what the impact is. They're just saying, we don't need to. Is that correct?
They're saying that the number of units does not create an impact to warrant improvements because of that development. It's not saying that further study is not needed on that road, but is, this particular development is not going to make the problem worse.
We did have the peak numbers shown.
Yes, we did. It was in there. They did show the numbers as compared to the previous. Something, and this was mentioned during the future land use meetings, some things that the township has done in this particular area. We worked with ODOT to create a right-turn lane on Beauchamp Avenue onto Eight Mile to go north. We've looked and done a Clough Pike study, and looking at improvements at Clough Pike and Eight Mile, which would actually impact this intersection as well. And those are two of the things. The issue is, one of the other issues is limited right-of-way in this particular area, and the county is not in a position to acquire right-of-way. The applicant had mentioned if Speedway were to redevelop, there's, you know, potential changes there, but we don't know if or when that's going to happen. So those are some of the issues with traffic. But the role of this board is to determine if the zone change is appropriate for land use, and then the other items that we stated in our staff report.
Mike, did you have any?
I have questions.
Mr. Dr. Arthur?
No questions.
I think we can open it to discussion at this point now. Maybe Brian, would you like to kick us off?
Yes.
So it was an important factor to me that this went through the land use plan renewal process initially, before we heard this. At the, at that stage, I was opposed to this change for a number of reasons that we reheard tonight. But that's all in the past now, because this use has determined, been determined to be consistent with the land use plan amended, as was approved by the Board of Trustees. So in my mind, that changes things. I do still believe this is not an ideal location for a lot more traffic, but sometimes you have to worry about, if this doesn't happen, what are you going to get there? Are you going to get another carpet warehouse, or something like that, that's not transitional? So when I look at these drawings, I think they, they are nice. There are definitely some, some positives to this development. I really like how fronting Eight Mile, they paid attention to that, and put the garages in the back. I do have some comfort level with this developer. They showed a few examples of, like their sister company, some of the developments they do. So I think, you know, I feel comfortable with the development of this project, and that it'll go forward as it's shown. I would like to see, this board recommends, just a little bit of detail changes. on the architecturals, that the wrap, the stone wrap go around the sides of the buildings and that we use a concrete-based siding and not vinyl. I think that will make a tremendous difference. And then also, I think the landscaping plan, I'll take Mr. Gothard's point, the white pines probably shouldn't be in there. The white pines grow up and then all the limbs fall off them over the years. So, if you look at a mature grove of white pines, you can see right through it because they cut their limbs off themselves. So, the landscape people need to take a hard look at that and fix that, I would recommend. And also, that northern area, Mr. Moore pointed out, there's a lot of grading that's going to cut into that. So, I don't know what, I don't know what natural landscaping we're going to have left there, but certainly Sarah and Paul should be given an opportunity to reevaluate that. But with all that being said, yeah, I think it is in a transitional spot. I agree with what the resident said. It's jumping over Cherry Lane. I don't have an answer for that. Would I like to wait for something better? Maybe, but this is a transitional area and that's what that use is. So, with some, I think, very fairly minor modifications, I'd support this. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add that I think that this contributes to the diversity of housing spaces available in the township in a way that if we got a high-end developer, we'd get more 400, $500,000 homes, which is not contributing to the diversity of housing in our area.
Michael?
I am in agreement with what the other commissioners have said. When it comes to the facade, I agree with using a hardy or some type of cement-based composite siding versus the vinyl, even though it does have to be maintained, I think, over the long run. If it is maintained, it looks better and it's a higher quality product. And I, I don't know, I think I would be okay if it was switched to a hardy if we didn't require a brick wrap, as I think the hardy in and of itself would improve the size as well. So, that'd be my only recommended modification to what you stated. Done.
Mr. Gothard?
You know, I think looking at the land use and knowing it's going to come back for, you know, final development plan, the applicant to take the aesthetic aspects that we've talked about and incorporate that in the final development plan.
Correct. Paul?
You know, land use, I agree with Mr. Eliff, you know, in the previous meeting, concern about it wasn't part of the land use plan, it wasn't identified as this, we're sort of skipping over Cherry Lane, but that has been modified now. So, you know, that is sort of the basis of our decision, I think, is the current land use plan and how it addresses that. Also, seeing on the plan, the proposed 50-foot right of way, I think that's part of the final development plan, too. Is that going to be dedicated now or is that future? So, you know, if that, obviously, there is some sort of plan, if they want 34, 30 feet more of right of way, there is some plan for Eight Mile. We have no idea, quite frankly, what that may be, but the county's wanting 30 more feet. So, you know, that's sort of showing something in the crystal ball in the future, but we don't know what it is. But looking at the land use and knowing what the guidelines are now as far as the land use plan, I think that's really what we are, we're looking at and how it applies. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jonathan. And I'm not necessarily interested in playing Design Review Board. I, I don't really have a strong opinion on the materials. I think what is proposed is pretty attractive, as is. I do agree, Brian, coming into the development, seeing that Easter, you know, easterly facing walls is like blank. Vinyl siding might not be that attractive, but the, the materials themselves, I, I don't want to kind of lord over that too terribly much. The one thing that I really like about this development that stands out to me, being a resident of Summit of States, is that this is 36 units with one single curb gut and one shared accessway and not, you know, three single-family houses with three driveways or four or five facing Eight Mile, which to me presents a far less safe situation. So, to me, that stands out that I'm kind of appreciative that we're getting a development of this caliber and not having that kind of impact. Yes, I mean, we have the churches, we have the school that my kids go to that create traffic problems, but I think at the end of the day, this isn't going to disturb any of that whatsoever. So, I think if we don't have any more discussion, we could entertain a motion if there's one.
Just a quick question. So, Mr. Gothard touched on this. So, is this going to come back to us yet again to review the landscaping plan and?
Yes. If, if the trustee's approves the zone change, then the final development plan will come back to you.
They're getting into some of that a little ahead of time, but hopefully we'll see that.
Just hoping that didn't fall on deaf ears.
Because we get the final say on the final development plan, don't we?
Yes.
I do, I guess maybe it's worth adding, too, that the, it's interesting, the land use designation that we approved in November does have the language and like kind of stark language in there, almost like acting as a caveat where it says effectively terminating the spread of higher intensity uses and conserving the adjacent residential neighborhoods. And I think that's pretty like firm language. We're, we are essentially drawing a line in the sand here, too. And anyone who experiences this process and has a memory and if things intend to change on the northern properties, have something pretty, some terra firma to stand on, I think. So.
I guess I'll move to make a motion to approve. Sorry. Case 1-2024 Anderson with the staff recommendations for the variance for the 31-foot setback, knowing that's off of a 50-foot additional right of way dedication. The easement forged to north to benefit only the properties to the north and not the existing, or the property under consideration. And I missed and lost my staff report. There is one other sort of recommendation for staff.
Consolidation.
Yes, consolidation of the three parcels into one single parcel.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Dundas?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda, item number four, is also a public hearing for a major modification request in case 10, 1970 Anderson for 7885 Beauchamp Avenue.
Are you ready? Okay. The applicant here is Garrett Allegrie, I think I said that right, who's the property manager for Anderson Square Apartments on behalf of Anderson Square Apartments LLC, who is a property owner. Location is 7885 Beauchamp Avenue, which is also known as 1100 King Louis Court. The request is for a major modification to the final development plan. Major modification to the final development plan for case 10, 1970. This is for the construction of a 960-square-foot barn to replace some existing maintenance buildings. So, I, I found the history a little interesting. So, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on the, on the history here. There was an application for a zone change from C Single Family to DD Plan Multifamily back in 1970. It was originally heard by the Rural Zoning Commission because this was prior to the Anderson Township zoning. In December of 1970, the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, it was approved and then the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners denied the zone change. An appeal was made to the Court of Common Pleas, which overturned the decision and ultimately left the property unzoned. So, then on October in 1975, the Board of County Commissioners reheared the case and approved the zone change and proved it as DD. At that time, the development was already constructed, so it was pretty much an as-built zoning. So, we tried to find any relevant conditions that apply to the storage barn from 1970. What we came up with is the approval was based on a 50-foot buffer to property to the south and to the west and then 30 feet to the east. So, this is the site in question. Again, it's accessed off of King Louis Court. At the time it was constructed, it was given the Beauchamp Avenue address, which later also shares a King Louis Court address. This is the, the site plan, well, the aerial map basically coming in off of King Louis Court. This is an old tennis court that hasn't been used for quite some time and then the storage sheds are in this particular area here. So, this is the zoning map to the, along Beauchamp Avenue, it's zoned retail. To the east is zoned D multifamily. These are townhomes. And then to the south and to the west is zoned single family. So, this is the site plan that was provided by the applicant. This is the proposed building here, again, approximately 960 square feet. Their existing sheds are proposed to be removed as well as the tennis court. This is elevation drawing of the building and some of the building plans. So, these are some of the site photos that we're taking. These are the two buildings and the approximate location for the new storage barn. This is looking north toward Beauchamp Avenue. This is the back of Candado. I believe that's the back of, yes. These, again, are the storage buildings that would be removed and replaced with the proposed barn. Just looking at different vantage points. This last vantage point is from the Candado parking lot, but you can see some of the existing vegetation. Then also, Candado was required to put in buffering from their parking lot since the Anderson Square Apartments are zoned for multifamily residential. So, zoning resolution compliance, actually, this was quoted earlier for the previous case. These are the general requirements for the DD zoning district. So, number one and two, the size and location of the tract. And then number two, furthering the objective was stated earlier. The proposed barn, staff is of the opinion that proposed barn would be constructed to replace two existing accessory structures in doing so and replacing, well, not replacing, but removing the tennis courts. So, in essence, even though the, the barn is larger, it is reducing the impervious surface area and it's also reduced, or the setbacks are compliant with the approving resolution in 1970. Again, the barn would not disturb that particular area. Findings with our comprehensive plan, we did mention the housing chapter as well as the land use and development chapter. So, staff's recommendation was approval based off of these four reasons and there is no recommended conditions. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Could you actually go back to the aerial view of the slides?
This is the proposed location right here.
Is the cages, is that property line? It doesn't seem to.
The, the red line here?
Yeah.
So, that is our line drawn in, but it should be drawn in on the property line. We were just outlining the parcel. This is a property map here that helps better. You can somewhat see the existing tree canopy over here.
And I, the transition from minor to major modification, it's here only because the square footage of the structure is changing, right?
Correct. It's adding a new structure on the property. So, that constituted a major modification.
Thank you.
A minor is something that staff can approve. Major is heard by the zoning commission.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, if the applicant is in attendance and would like to approach and make yourself available for questions and offer any insight that you have, please do. Please remember to state your name, address.
Yeah, my name is Garrett Allegrie, Anderson Square Apartments, 1100 King Louis Court.
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess we can start. Pam, did you have any questions for the applicant? No. Michael? Brian?
Just want to confirm that the wall surface is planned to be a matte black derib steel panel?
The walls?
Yeah, based on the Gable 1 drawing that was submitted.
Yeah, yeah, that would be what it'd be.
It will be metal sided?
Yeah. Oh, the color will be beige.
Beige?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No other questions.
The only question I had was the, it looks like the barn doesn't take up the same area as the tennis courts. The tennis courts are a lot bigger.
Yeah.
Any plans for that surface? Like, are you going to do something with the area where the tennis courts are? Is it going to go back to grass?
It's going to go back to grass.
Okay.
And then if we need to, we can put some, like bushes up there if it doesn't look great or anything like that.
Great, thank you. I didn't have any additional questions either. Thank you very much. If there are any audience members who have any questions of the commission, who'd like to come ask a question? Ms., we're, we're at public questions regarding this case. Did you have a question for the commission? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we can close public comment and question portion of the meeting and open up discussion amongst the commissioners. I will say, when I saw that they were removing the tennis courts, I immediately thought we were talking about pickleball. I'm kind of surprised that we're not getting pickleball courts, but I didn't have any other discussion points.
Yeah, I would just want, this seems pretty straightforward, but some assurance that they're not, not just going to plop it down and leave the surface of the old tennis court there and, you know, have it look worse.
Mr. Dundas?
No, I'm generally in favor of it. I mean, I think it's fine. It'll probably look better than the two existing storage buildings that are there. So, good.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Dundas for sure. I mean, it's not going to be a terrific-looking building, but I don't think it's that apparent, you know, and it's probably needed for the operation of the units.
No additional comments?
Yeah. Similarly, I don't have any comments, so I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll, I'll attempt a motion in case 10, 1970, that the, the request for a major modification to the final development plan for the construction of a 960-square-foot barn for maintenance and storage be approved.
I'll second.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Dundas?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
No.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five on tonight's agenda, which is a quasi-judicial hearing for a planned unit development. It being a quasi-judicial hearing, I do need to outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are. from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not and will not hear opinions, just facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone, and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did.
Thank you very much. Paul, if you'd like to give your...
Thank you. And I don't know why the lights are dimming.
Oh, the brightness out?
But if for some reason we do lose power, we have a generator, so just give it a minute to kick in. I don't know why. It's, I've never experienced that before. I, I don't know what's going on. So, just to let the audience know, we do have a generator. For some reason, the power goes out. All right, the applicant is John Bayer of Bayer &amp; Becker on behalf of Wawa, on behalf of Robert Helston, trustee, who is the property owner. The location's at fifty-three fifteen and fifty-three thirty-one Beauchamp Avenue. The request is a planned unit development approval for a proposed construction of a Wawa Fuel and Convenience Store, approximately five thousand nine hundred square feet with fifty parking spaces, dumpster enclosure, landscaping, and lighting. The proposed impervious surface ratio is eighty-one point four, so anything over sixty percent triggers the PUD hearing before the zoning commission. The building on the property was constructed in nineteen seventy-three, and just going through old photos, the last I could see that the BP was in operation was in two thousand two, although it's, Mr. Helston probably knows when it actually stopped operation, but somewhere in the late nineties, early two thousand two. But we do know for certain that it has been vacant since two thousand two. This is the site in question. Beauchamp Avenue is off to the angle here on the slide, and this is Elston Road. This is the building that was, is formerly the BP gas station. Again, there are two parcels. This is the front parcel, and this is the rear parcel. This is the site, I'm sorry, the aerial from cages, and as you can see, the back of the property is fairly wooded. And again, the vacant building in the front. This is the topography map. It is very steep. It rises generally to the south. So, this is the site plan. It is a proposed right-in, right-off access off of Beauchamp Avenue and full access off of Elston. The building is designed to have two, two main entrances, one off of the, if you call this the rear, and then one off of the front, and then the fueling pumps would be located in the front toward Beauchamp Avenue. The site, due to the topography, will have proposed retaining walls that are quite extensive, that do pretty much go around the periphery of the site. So, this is a retaining wall here, and then there's also another retaining wall in the back. And the reason why we say that this one back here extends almost twenty-eight feet tall, so just to give you an idea of the change in elevation of the site that we're dealing with, that also relays to some of the variances that are requested. The majority of the parking spaces are on the side of the property here to the, this is kind of to the south to the east. Beauchamp Avenue takes a jog here, and then there are a few parking spaces up toward Beauchamp Avenue, again, parking in the rear of the building and in the front of the building. This is the landscape plan that was submitted, landscaping along Beauchamp Avenue, some of the interior landscape island. This is the lighting plan that was submitted, and we'll go through the zoning compliance. The lighting plan is not in compliance. There are areas, so the property, this area here along to the south or to the east is zoned multifamily in the city of Cincinnati, so the foot candle requirements are point one at the property line, and then adjacent is the UDF, and then across the street is Skytop Apartments and Big Ash. That's all zoned retail, so point seven-five foot candles at the property line is what is required there. These are the elevation drawings, as well as sign package as well. This is the, I'll make sure I'm getting my variance right. This is the, the front elevation toward Beauchamp Avenue. This is the rear elevation. This would be the side elevation toward Elston, and then this would be the, the side elevation as well on the other side. This is the fuel canopy. It is in an angle, and again, there is a variance requested for that as well because it exceeds the height of our, our requirements for fuel canopies due to the angle. The dumpster enclosure. This is the pre-staining sign that's proposed, which is compliant with zoning. It's proposed at a height of twelve feet. These are some of the drone shots that we took. This is Beauchamp Avenue here. This is Spindle Hill. This little sign right here is Hamilton County Maintenance, so that's a good guide for you. This area right through here is the city of Cincinnati, and then this is somewhat the back of the parcel that's in Anderson Township. It's not exact, but it gives you a good guide of where the township ends and where the city begins. So, the driveway, the full access onto Elston would be in this general vicinity right here with the property line kind of going back through here, but you can see the change in elevation. And again, this is, the area here would be graded for the site. This is looking at the site, Beauchamp Avenue, again, Elston, UDF, and this is Spindle Hill. Which I don't know if you've ever seen all of the piers that keep Beauchamp up, but there you go. Thought that was interesting, too. And, uh, this is Spindle, or I'm sorry, this is Elston. These are townhouses in the city of Cincinnati, looking at the site, again, looking up toward the Beauchamp Hill at the site in question. The township recently constructed this trail. This is called the Little Miami Connector, Little Miami Trail. This is phase one of a two-phase project. The other phase is to bring the trail over to Little Miami, but this was phase one. So, again, the zoning commission is reviewing this as a PUD because the site is over sixty percent. It's approximately eighty percent ISR hard surface, so that triggers the PUD. So, looking at zoning resolution compliance, these are the items that are non-compliant. Everything else is compliant. So, number one, or I'm sorry, Article five point two-ten, the township requires a maximum height of a canopy at eighteen feet. The proposed is at twenty-five point five feet. The setback of all parking lots adjacent to the right-of-way of a public street, there's required to be a ten-foot streetscape buffer, and that's from the right-of-way to the beginning of the parking spaces. That area can be used for a sidewalk or landscaping. The applicant, and I didn't touch on this, I mentioned the trail that the township constructed, but the city and ODOT are also in the process of constructing a trail up the Beauchamp Hill and Beauchamp Avenue. So, they are requiring right-of-way for that, and it's proposed right through here in this, in this vicinity or the site plan. So, because of that, it's unclear if additional right-of-way or easement is required for the trail. Right-of-way will be required for the right-turn lane, but you can see additional or future right-of-way line. So, the street, the proposed streetscape buffer from this corner here of the parking lot is two feet from the future right-of-way line, which may actually be an easement, and we can ask the applicant to clarify that because our requirement is to the right-of-way, not to an easement, but regardless, if it is a future right-of-way, the two feet would be here. This area here to the future right-of-way would be eight feet. So, a variance is requested. There is a retaining wall, so there is going to be an elevation difference between the trail and the parking lot, but that is a variance that is being requested. And we put a range in there because of, the one point is at a two, and then the other end is a, with eight feet. The second area, the dumpster enclosure, the township permits a maximum height of eight feet. The applicant was proposing eight feet, eight inches. The number of parking spots, so the township allows for a range, ten percent above or ten percent below the optimum number. So, fifty-seven is the optimum number. Ten percent would put the applicant at fifty-one, and they are showing fifty. Again, we already discussed the lighting, which is not compliant in a couple of areas that are adjacent to the multifamily zoning district, as well as a couple of areas on the street, which are point seven-five. The wall signage exceeds the maximum permitted, so our formula for wall signage is twenty percent of the facade, but it does max out at two hundred fifty square feet. The applicant is proposing three hundred thirty-seven square feet, which does not include the canopy. The canopy has eighty-five square feet, which is compliant for the canopy. We calculated the canopy as a separate structure than the building itself. So, the canopy was compliant, but the building itself is not compliant. In reviewing the comprehensive plan, the proposed development is consistent with economic vitality, land use and development, and land use and development initiatives from our comprehensive plan. From the design guidelines, again, we felt that it was compliant, even with the request of variance of the setback from the parking, that it was compliant with our design guidelines, and same with landscaping. Architecture, there was a mixture of building materials that were called out on the elevation drawings, and again, even though the, the canopy, they're requesting a variance for the height, it does add style and different, you know, it adds a different type of scale and architecture to the site, so staff was supportive of that. Pedestrian circulation, so there is a proposed sidewalk along Elston. There is a sidewalk on Spindle Hill, so there's about a fifty-foot gap that we would, that's off their site, but we encourage the sidewalk on, on their site and then ultimately to connect to Spindle Hill. And then, again, the proposed hike bike trail along Beauchamp Avenue, so that's consistent with township plans as well. So, staff's recommendation was approval based off of the PUD criteria from the comprehensive plan. Again, I won't read through all these. They're in your staff report. Staff recommend the following variances. One was for the height of the canopy, which is twenty-five feet versus eighteen feet. The canopy was no taller than the building itself, so we felt that they were compatible. It, it wouldn't stick up higher than the other one. And then the other variance was for the ten-foot streetscape buffer, and for these particular reasons. The other areas that are non-compliant, staff feels like they should be able to bring those into compliance, including the number of parking spaces. They were showing their parking spaces at ten by twenty. We require nine by nineteen, so you could actually bring them to nine by nineteen and, and meet or exceed the fifty-one parking spaces. The lighting plan should be brought into compliance, and we think that's very important when adjacent to a residential zoning district, that the lighting, the foot candles are point one at the property line. These are the recommended conditions from staff, that the two parcels be consolidated, that the lighting plan be brought into compliance. Oh, the dumpster enclosure, that was the other one. We feel that it should only be eight feet versus eight feet, eight inches. And then also that the wall signage be brought into compliance. That is the other item that staff was not recommending a variance for. We felt that it was adequately aligned on three sides, and that two hundred fifty square feet was adequate for that building. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Sorry, I went over kind of fast.
No, thank you, Paul. We'll start again. Pam, with you down at your end, if you have any questions for staff. Mr. Dungus?
Can you show on the lighting plan where it's not compliant? Pull that up. Tried to open my drawings up, but it's kind of obnoxious.
No, it's fine. So, there, oh, sorry. There are a couple, and I can't read them on here, but just going off of memory, there were a couple of areas back here that were greater than point one, a couple of areas over here that were greater than point one, and then there were a couple of hotspots out here that were greater than point five. They were about one point, one point, one point one and one point a little bit higher.
This I was trying to figure out is where those lights are positioned and with the retaining, the size of that retaining wall. Is it going to throw light on the site?
Well, that, so the retaining wall very well could have an impact. It may not have been taken into consideration with the lighting plans. A lot of times they're not. I can pass this down. This is the highlighted portions are the areas that are not in compliance.
Okay, so maybe we could even put that on if we said it was not compliant, and maybe it was reevaluated with the retaining wall factored in. Okay. That's all I had for staff.
Mr. E. Look?
Yeah, just one, two questions. It looked like, when I was looking at, I think it's maybe the survey, sorry. The most impacted property that wraps around it is owned by the same trust as owns this property. Is that, am I reading that right?
I don't think so. So, the property that wraps around it belongs to Spindle Hill Apartments. So, this property here is owned by the Spindle Hill Apartments. This property here is in the site in question. I think these, I think these all had different owners.
Am I right?
Can you find my sheet now where I was looking at that? All right.
Well, if I find that, I'll revisit that question, but...
We're thinking the city may have purchased some of them for the bike trails as well, going up Beauchamp.
The other question I had was the sidewalk. A lot of times, we pay a lot of attention to side rock going around the perimeter, as well as sidewalk tying into the building entrance. Is that an issue here, and is that occurring here? I, I saw the discussion about the right-of-way being reserved in the front for a future trail, but I am having trouble seeing sidewalk, how it ties in, that sort of thing.
So, they're tying in the sidewalk from Beauchamp right through here.
I see that, okay.
There is no, so this area here, they're not showing the pedestrian connection. With the retaining walls, you either do have to come up the driveways. You won't be able to access it straight from Elston. So, pedestrian connection would be through the driveway here. This is straight... This is striped off of Beauchamp.
And then there's sidewalk along Beauchamp.
There would be that hike bike trail.
The bike trail.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Gauthier?
No questions for staff, thank you.
Paul, the only question that hasn't been asked was really looking at the UDF across the way. There can't be, this isn't, they did it so can I, but it's a contextual thing. It looks higher than eighteen feet as well. And is that wrong? Because it has like a little, like, whatever you want to call it, above it as well.
I don't know what the height that that one is.
Okay. Might not.
I don't have a good angle either, I don't believe.
Oh, and it seems like what's going on with the county and the bike trail is still up in the air, but the location of those five parking spaces, you kind of touched on it. We don't know whether it would have an impact on the viability of the trail, that squeezing it down to two feet like that.
So I want the, I would prefer the applicant speak to, they've been working with.
Yeah, because we don't have a county here either.
Right. I did, so this has been submitted to ODOT for traffic impact study, and they're still reviewing when one is going to be required, and improvements are being required as well. The right turn in, right turn out, potentially extending that right turn lane in off of Beauchamp, and then improvements on Elston are going to be required. They're still in the process, and I don't think their final recommendations have come back just yet, but I'll let the applicant speak to that. As far as I know, there's future right-of-way shown on their plans. In my discussions with ODOT, right-of-way would be required for the right turn lane, but it wouldn't be required for the bike trail, which could be an easement. But again, that's still to be determined unless the applicant has new information. We feel that regardless if it's an easement or if it's right-of-way, it's being accommodated on the plan.
Okay. And again, this is more of a regional planning commission question, but, and I laugh a little bit asking this, judging by what's across the street. But I'm curious if the grading plan hasn't triggered like a steep slopes review or something through Hamlin County?
I don't think that has been submitted yet, but again, I'll have the applicant speak to that.
Okay, awesome. All right, I don't have any more questions. If the applicant would like to approach the podium to make any presentation or answer any questions, just remember to state your name, address, and affiliation.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Patrick Warmit. I work for Wawa. Our corporate address is two sixty West Baltimore Pike, Wawa, Pennsylvania, one nine zero six three, but I live in West Chester, Ohio.
Cool. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Baer with Baer Becker, here on behalf of the applicant. We are the civil engineers, surveyors, landscape architects, and transportation engineers on the project.
Cool, thank you. Pam, did you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, having looked at this parcel of land, I guess my question was really about the grading as well. Like, is it going to be a totally flat parking lot, or is it going to slope up?
So Wawa has pretty specific grading of what they want to see around their building and around their site access. Their customer experience is everything to them, so there's going to be some tall retaining walls, as Paul noted in his presentation, and Terricon has been working on this project from a geotechnical standpoint for the wall design. But at the end of the day, the parking lot and walkways around the building will be flat like a normal, more typical flat site that you would expect.
Now, we do have a presentation. Everybody, Wawa is new to the area, so I thought it would be worthwhile to have a quick presentation and introduce everybody to the company a little bit more. Oh, I'll stop pushing buttons. I have another copy of it if you want to try. I think I've about got it memorized at this point, but. Okay. I'll just rely on you then, Paul. That's okay. I'll try it right now. Oh, there we go. Beautiful. All right, thank you. So Wawa is a very interesting place. I've been here for almost a year now, and I think the main thing I want to get across is it's very different than a typical convenience store. Family-like atmosphere, fresh-to-order food. We don't have a fryer, so the food there is much better than what you'll experience at most convenience stores. Community devotion, we'll get into a little bit later, and the emotional connection with customers I think you'll see in future slides as well. But if you go to Philadelphia, New Jersey, Delaware, people are absolutely crazy about this place, so. Continue here. Company started in eighteen oh-three as an iron foundry. You'll see the fire hydrant on there in Pennsylvania, or actually started in New Jersey with the Wood family. In future years, they got into the cotton business, dairy business, and eventually one of the Wood brothers opened a food market. And now there's over a thousand stores, and in nineteen ninety-six, we started selling fuel. So food is much bigger to us than fuel ever has been, so. Abraham Lincoln was a debt collector for Wawa for a period of time in the eighteen hundreds. I think they still have a handwritten letter from him at our headquarters, so that's unbelievable, but interesting. So here's some more data. Forty-five thousand employees right now, a thousand stores. We're trying to get up to two thousand stores within ten years, so lots of growth planned here, largely Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, and Tennessee, and then some of our southeast folks are moving from Florida up to Georgia and Alabama. So Philadelphia's headquarters, a lot of stores in that region, and it's privately We operate an ESOP and employee stock program, so everybody's eligible for that, so the folks that work here will be part owners in the company. So that's all, I think, positive stuff. This is everywhere we go. This is on everything we do, fulfilling lives every day. I'll tell you a quick story. They have a program where they have us corporate folks go work at a store for a day, and I did that recently in Florida, and it is amazing to watch this in person. And we do free offerings for police, fire, first responders of all sorts, and they come in there, they know everybody by name. It was something you don't see real often anymore, so that was neat. This is core values, you know, again, this is in everything we do. It's, you know, I've only been there a year, but our real estate manager in Miami, I never met her, she was with the company for about two years, and six months in, was diagnosed with stomach cancer, and they kept her on for a year and a half, knowing she was going to produce zero, just so she could have an income and health insurance. If that tells you what kind of company Wawa is, I don't think many folks would do that anymore. And this is some of the fanatical stuff that I was talking about earlier. There are people on the East Coast who have weddings at Wawa stores. I still don't fully understand that, being a year in, but it's not something you see with most convenience store chains, that's for sure. There are people with Wawa tattoos. Our grand openings at our stores tend to be big events, you know, hundreds of people show up. Picture on the top right is in downtown Philadelphia that does not have gas. Obviously, it's the first floor of a larger building, but the number of people you see around that in a different picture we have is almost hard to believe. Here's some more data, just, you know, with a thousand stores. This is sort of typical sales in a, in a day or a year or whatever, so we've got a lot of data on that. So our CEO's got a great little speech that he gives about, you know, we're not a coffee shop, but we serve as much coffee as an average Starbucks. We're not a, you know, fast food type place, but we serve as many sandwiches as any, you know, food place out there, so it's an interesting business. This slide needs to be updated. We do operate a community foundation as well. This doesn't have twenty-twenty-three on it. That number's now a hundred and fifty million plus that we've donated to various communities that we serve. You know, we've got national partners like Red Cross, USO and such, but, I mean, this can get very, very local, as to like the high school marching band, local, that needs money to go to some performance somewhere or whatever it is, so that I think is something else that differentiates just quite a bit from other convenience stores. Emergency support, I mean, some of this good in the community type thing that we do, I mean, it's Florida specifically, I mean, when there's hurricanes and such, we very much try to be the last store to close and the first one to open back up, and be there for people when they really need it. Some of these slides just show some of the different food offerings and such, which, you know, are interesting. I mean, we've got, most of it's fresh-to-order. We do have a small thing for pre-made items, but a lot of it's fresh-to-order. And the coffee and some of these, they call them energizers or re-energizers, I can't remember, but the drink component, you know, specialized drink component of our business is very good, too. And here's some more data on, you know, how we compare to other businesses and such. Hoagies are one of our real big things, and I've understood now that if you're in Philadelphia, hoagies, subs, and all that stuff means something different. Where out here, we probably just call it all the same thing. One of the big focuses lately has been dinnertime, you know, breakfast and lunch have always been very strong, so now we're doing pizza and other things to try to strengthen the food offering at dinnertime. Our ATMs don't have fees on them, and neither do our air pumps, so that's just a nice little added thing for folks. We do have some curbside, you'll see little numbers on some of our parking spaces for curbside type stuff. And John here will walk you through the technical things, and if you want to know anything else about the company or anything, I'm certainly glad to help out any way I can.
I don't have a whole lot to go on here. Obviously, staff presented pretty thoroughly, but just want to touch on a couple key points here. And I apologize, I missed one of the conditions of approval here in my presentation, but at a high level, we're in agreement with all of the conditions that are proposed by staff, with the exception of one. On my list, it's number three, but it may be number four on your list, and that is, as it pertains to bringing the wall signage into compliance with the zoning regulations. So before I go into the details of the signage that are proposed, I just want to take a quick look at the site layout. So as Patrick mentioned in his discussion, Wawa as a brand really is a food and convenience brand to their customers, and fuel is really a secondary newer add to their market offerings. And their site is laid out to match that delivery method to their customers. As you can see here, there's parking surrounding the building. Typically, there would be parking from this view on the north side as well, but just given the site constraints, it was limited to three sides. And with the parking on what appears to be the rear of the building, including one accessible space, that isn't a back-of-house type setup that you would see at a normal fuel store. That's not where the trash gets left and things pile up. That's a second access for customers, because the fuel canopy area tends to be the busiest part of a C-store site. That second access is in the back for folks coming just for the food items, the coffee, those types of things, again, to create an efficient in and out for folks that are coming for their potentially daily breakfast or what have you, again, avoiding that typically congested front area of the site there. So just a brief look through signage. This is the facade that would face Beauchamp. As you're traveling on Beauchamp, this is what you would see. There's four total signs, so on the left-hand side, there's four wood, I'm sorry, three wood-grained panels that show some of the food offerings that Wawa has, and then obviously the Wawa logo sign there at the top. This elevation has a hundred and seventy-six square feet of signage. Transitioning now, as you would move around the site toward the right-hand side from Beauchamp, so this is now looking from the Elston Road direction. On this facade, only one sign, again, the Wawa typical logo representing thirty-two square feet. And then lastly, this is the rear entrance of the store, as I mentioned, and as you can see on the elevation here and from the signage details, again, this isn't CMU block and dumpster enclosure here. This is saying to the customers, hey, this is a second entrance. If you're coming, it don't need to be in the fuel area of the site. So on this elevation, four signs total, again, two of the product offering type signs that are wood-grained with white lettering and imagery, a welcome sign that kind of matches that same styling, and then a Wawa logo there above the glass storefront. Two quick views here of that same kind of story as you're moving around the site. So this is the two elevations that someone would see from the intersection. That red shaded triangle is trying to emulate someone in the intersection looking toward the site, and they would see the top elevation, which faces Beauchamp, and the bottom elevation, which faces Elston, and in total, there would be two-hundred-and-eight square feet of signage visible from that vantage point. Transitioning around to the Elston entrance to the site, from here, you would still have view of the Elston elevation, obviously, and now you're seeing that second entrance on the backside. So from this view, a total of a hundred and sixty-one square feet of signage is visible. And all that to say that, you know, really, the ask here is not, Wawa wants to put four-hundred square feet of signage on the front of the building and make this an overwhelming signage from folks traveling on Beauchamp. The ask more so is, we understand the typical C-store would have about two-hundred-and-fifty square feet on their visible facades, but because really the function and form of a Wawa store is a little bit more dynamic than that, that rear facade, the signage is geared toward showing people, hey, this is an entrance, you're welcome to come in this way, especially in a new market for Wawa, to give them a good presence to customers as they become familiar with the brand. I'm going to work just quickly through a couple key points from the code here, so the signage code obviously is detailed to establish regulations on signage in the interest of safety, general welfare of citizens, businesses, and the community. It aims to minimize adverse effects to public safety and create a more aesthetic environment. As staff noted in their presentation, the application is geared toward meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan. This use, we feel, falls under the land usage of general mixed use. Wawa as a brand represents economic vitality. I think their long storied track record that Patrick presented shows they're in for the long haul, and they really want to be a community partner. And again, as I mentioned, with the multiple accesses to the store and creating that user environment, this is not your typical C-store that's coming to town, that's going to stick the store in the corner and have freezer cases full of packaged goods. They're really creating a unique experience for their customers, and I think this, the signage really, you know, supports their mission in doing that. These are just a couple of the guidelines from the PUD Purpose and Standards. The PUD overlay encourages innovation in planning and building types of development. It looks for consistency with adopted objectives and policies of the township. So as I mentioned, you know, with the comprehensive plan, the plan is consistent with that redevelopment of vacant storefronts and meeting those needs. But the PUD does allow for modifications of the zoning, where it would create an innovative design, and it's our opinion that this innovative use of the site, and again, a different take on the C-store, represents that innovative design, and the signage is a big key in presenting that to the customers. I don't have any additional information to share, but I'm here for any technical questions you might have, and as Patrick said, for any brand-related other questions. Be happy to answer. Thank you. Thank you.
I think I should mention one more thing, if that's all right. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware, we don't franchise at all. This will be our store. Every thousand and some odd stores we have is corporate-owned, and just, I mean, I think everyone's probably dig. I think everyone's probably digested this, but I mean, the site is tough and there's probably a reason why that nothing's happened here in quite a while, but we're certainly in it to, to do this, so.
Um, I just have one question. I want to make sure I'm just understanding, are, are you out of compliance with the signage because of the size of the signage or the overall square footage? Because you're on more than one side.
So the, the total square footage of signage is higher than what is permitted by the underlying zoning. Um, the underlying zoning has two hundred and fifty square feet of total wall signage, and that can be broken out into, I believe, any number of signs. Um, and the proposal is three hundred and thirty-seven square feet.
Okay. And that's primarily because you're trying to advertise the backside as another entrance. I just wanted to be sure I understood.
Um, can you flip back to your slide? I maybe just answered. Um, so you said you would like a variant for the signage, you will comply with the parking, the lighting and the dumpster. Hey, who's wrong with the slide?
That's correct.
Okay.
I, my slide neglected to include the dumpster enclosure one.
Okay.
But we are in agreement um, with that change.
If approved, what's your timeline?
Uh, realistically, uh, I mean, we've got a development partner. We do that quite often. We're, we do a long-term ground lease and uh, so they turn over to us a pad-ready site. We build the building, the canopy, the tanks, so on and so forth. So they would start site work as soon as, you know, John gets through all the technical stuff, and um, then it takes us six-ish months to build a building. So it would open sometime in twenty twenty-five presumably.
Twenty-five, is that it?
Yeah. We aren't opening any until January of twenty-five, even though there are some we probably could, but um, like this Friday, for example, I'm going to a groundbreaking for Bakery Express in Florence, Kentucky, because they're building a brand-new facility just to supply our stores with fresh baked goods. So like, that type of stuff takes time to catch up, so that's why we can't really open until January.
Mr. Ewes?
I know I had a question for Paul, so can I ask you that now, Paul? So is, um, if they want that sign, it's on the back. Sorry. It's a little unusual because it is a dual entrance. Um, yeah, that you don't see with a lot of these type stores. Is, is it that back sign that's drawing off the, the total? Or is it, or is it, if you eliminated that back sign, are they still over? I don't know if it's a ta, I don't.
They're all three different sizes, and actually, this was a unique sign plan. I, I have to compliment you because it was calculated two different ways. The
Of course.
And we took the smaller of the two. So on the signage plan, I don't know if you'll be able to see which one I'm referring to. So on, they're all three wall signs, all three Wawa signs on each of the sides are all three different sizes. Um, we took the option on the right here where it just highlighted in blue uh, dashes what was used to calculate. So we actually took the conservative approach and took the smaller of the two, but
Yes, standard.
The answer, I don't know if there's a good answer to your question. Also, the food signs, you know, that are on the building, the welcome sign, all that is taken into account for wall signs.
Do you feel like uh, from your role as having to answer to all the businesses in the township that always want more signs, is this going to create some kind of precedent or is this different because they have that rear entrance?
Well, I think it is different that it has a rear entrance, but then we also have a lot of businesses that have three sides visible to the main street. So
Gotcha.
I don't think three sides is that unusual for a, a building. Um, maybe a rear entrance is a little bit more unusual. Um, and again, the, the formula is twenty percent of the facade with a maximum of two hundred and fifty. They maxed out at two hundred and fifty. So that's what we were going by.
Okay. Um, okay, just one more question on that backside. So if they just shrank down that Wawa with the uh, goose flying, are they still going to be out of compliance because of everything else? I mean, would it be so, so I guess I was asking how big it is.
All three Wawas are different sizes.
Yeah.
Hard to tell.
They're eighty-seven feet over. Mr. Dungus just told me. I'm trying to figure out how big that sign is. Let's see, I got windows, building materials. Okay, well, never mind.
My turn?
Maybe.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Could you update us on the conversation with ODOT in the city of Cincinnati concerning the Beauchamp Avenue frontage?
Yes. Um, so as Paul alluded to in his presentation, a traffic study is very far along on the project. I won't say completed, so we've submitted back to Hamilton County, who has given us an email confirmation of their approval of the study, and we've submitted back to ODOT and are awaiting their response to that. Um, in concert with our recent middle of the traffic study, um, we've also posed the question as to what the right-of-way dedic, what the right-of-way requirements will be for the trail and the turn lane. We have not gotten a response back. Uh, my assumption is that we will get a formal response back with our response to our traffic study. Um, but in our experience, we're working on trail projects, um, and ones that ODOT has had governance in, we feel that we've provided the space for that trail, although it's in preliminary, the trail's in preliminary design now, it has been completed by ODOT. We believe we've provided sufficient space for that, and the variances we're asking for account for that space. Um, so our hope is that with approval of the traffic study with ODOT, we conclude on answers as to the easement location for the trail and right-of-way dedication, et cetera.
So the trail that's shown on your plans, would that be constructed with the site development for this project?
It is not planned to be included with the site, no. Only providing the space for it, uh, to be constructed at later date.
So there would be no, really no sidewalk along Beauchamp until the trail happens? Okay. Um, and you have no input on sort of the trail crosswalks, so to speak, across the right-in, right-out drive?
Um, I would expect for us to receive comments from ODOT on that crossing, as it'll ultimately be a part of their, their trail network. Um, we haven't received any feedback yet, uh, but we've designed it to the best of our knowledge to, to meet that trail requirement.
As you've noted and Paul noted, there's more retaining wall than there are streets, right? What's the proposed facing of the retaining wall or what type of retaining wall they're being proposed?
That's a good question. Um, so as I mentioned, Terricon is the geotechnical engineer that's designing the walls. Um, I reached out to them uh, before coming this evening to ask their latest on design. They have not completed that design yet, so they weren't able to share anything with me. Um, they did say that there is some flexibility on the facing of those walls. Um, so the wall on the south side of the plan would be a cut situation, um, and then the wall facing Beauchamp Nelson would be in a fill situation. On prior um, Wawa sites in the region, those fill walls have been a large block, um, ready rock style wall, if you're familiar with um, what that might look like, like a stone imprint basically on a large block, not a small allen block, but um, but again, the design hasn't been completed yet, so I don't have those details.
Okay. So no information on either sort of surface texture, color, or anything like that on the retaining?
Not at this time.
I see on the retaining wall on Beauchamp Nelson, there is a planned fence along that. Um, would that be forty-two inches in height to meet sort of a guardrail sort of situation? I don't see that same fence noted on the other property lines. Um, with one being a twenty-foot, eight-foot fall, um, would you entertain putting a fence along that one? You know, you never know who's going to be on that property that doesn't know there's a twenty-eight-foot step.
Yeah, that's been on our list
Be very dangerous.
To add to the plan, so
Okay.
Certainly, okay, making that a condition.
Okay. In the dumpster enclosure, you know, I understand willingness to go to eight-foot, but it looks like there might be more than just the typical dumpster in there. Would the eight-foot totally screen anything that's in that dumpster enclosure?
Yes.
We, we've done, we've had this exact same thing before, so the eight-foot is no issue.
Okay. That's great. I don't want to put you at eight-foot now, so
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, I did see the two, now I know, free air stations along Beauchamp. Um, so that sort of answers why you have two, because most people only have one, but if it's free, uh, people are going to come to you guys, right? Free air. Um, with every willingness to, on the canopy itself, you know, the twenty-five and a half feet height, to reduce maybe the slope of that, to bring it down a little bit more, to be more in compliance or in compliance with the zoning code?
Uh, our canopy design is actually trademarked, so we don't really deviate from it too much. I mean, you'll see some old stores on the east coast that have different things, but largely, we stick to it. I mean, if it becomes an enormous issue, we, I, we could figure out something, but I mean, you go to Florida, every single one of them looks exactly the same. So the only difference from Florida, Florida, they had a truss underneath and ours is open. So that's just probably the only real difference.
Heavy wind up against Florida, so.
One of our competitors more or less copied our design, but sloped it back towards the building instead of away from the building, so we had to go through this trademarking thing, whatever.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Um, with your like stated ability to meet the parking requirements, I think we're only short one space, right? Would that be through um, reducing the dimensions of existing spaces and is it like throughout the entire site or just in one location? Do you have a, an idea of how you'd get that space?
Yeah, I'm gonna um, jump a couple slides here. Um, so the parking spaces throughout the site are currently shown as ten by twenty feet, um, which is wider, one foot wider than the zoning uh, requirement. So these spaces along the south side, I'll call it the south side of the plan here, um, our, our plan would be to reduce those enough to pick up one space in that location.
Okay.
And they may end up being nine and a half foot spaces to get that one, uh, one more.
Great. Yeah, the other question's actually unrelated, but you mentioned two thousand twenty-five. How many others are opening in the region? I think I've heard through the grapevine of like one or two others, but.
Sure. Uh, twenty twenty-five, we plan an open ten in Ohio, ten in Kentucky, and ten in Indiana, minimum. Could be, you know, a couple more, but um, yeah. We did a Community Day event, uh, I think it was September last year, and took a little bus tour. CEO came out and everything and did Louisville, Lexington, Cincinnati, Dayton and Indianapolis, and had a bunch of big announcements. In Ohio, they committed over four hundred million dollars. So it's basically Cincinnati, Dayton, and a little ways north of there for the time period.
Sure, yeah.
And hopefully, on out further from there.
Uh, any other questions for the applicants?
Chair, I have a couple more slides. How many employees do you typically have in a store?
Uh, forty per store. Um, and like I say, they're, they're in the ESOP program and uh, we've got a little stat that we keep. In the convenience store industry, our employees have been there an average of over seven years. Convenience store industry as a whole is less than one year. So we've got very good retention. I mean, you have health insurance, a bonus check, I mean, a lot of things that, you know, a lot of convenience store chains just aren't going to do.
How many work in the store at any given time, the maximum?
No fewer than three. So even at nighttime, it's a minimum of three for safety reasons, obviously. Um, during the day, you're, you know, eight to ten, probably what you would call first shift, and then, you know, six-ish on second shift, and then probably three at nighttime.
And will you be guiding them to the proper parking spaces?
Yeah, they'll get all the nine-foot ones instead of the ten-foot ones.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I'm sure you don't want them parking around the side.
Oh, no, 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 no.
By the Beauchamp Avenue
Certainly.
South property line, I know what I meant.
Right, right. Absolutely.
Sure?
Uh, yeah, just, is this, obviously, there's some variation on the sizes of Wawa stores. Is this average, this one you're going to build? Is it smaller than average? Is it bigger than average?
Uh, depends on how old they are more than anything. Some of the older ones are smaller, certainly. Um, you know, you go to New Jersey, some of these stores have been there for forty years are not as big. But compared to like the stores in Florida that are all newer, they're very similar.
Any additional questions? No? Thank you. Um, at this point, uh, we can open the floor up to any audience members who'd like to speak in favor or against the project. Um, I don't think I saw any additional people swear in earlier, so if you are wishing to do so, I, I would need you to do that, but um, the floor is open, if we have anyone. Seeing no one taking that opportunity, we can close a public discussion of this and move into discussion amongst the commission. And I apologize, I think I owe you an apology. It's Janet, and that was made clear to me. That's my poor memory.
I got in the wrong direction, so I'm sorry.
So.
I'll take that.
If you'd like to open discussion, by all means.
I mean, I um, I, I am, I find it impressive, the challenges of the site and what they're trying to do. And I'm sure they've done their own cost analysis and decided that it's worth it, but it does seem formidable to me. Um, I am really on the fence about the signage. I, it, it looks to me like it could be shrunk a little bit and be at least closer into compliance without really losing whatever their wow factor is. That's about all I have.
I'm in favor of it, especially if they're going to make um, the plan compliant with um, the items. On the signage, Paul, what did you say the requ, was it, is it ten percent of the facade?
It's twenty, so we use the street frontage. Um, and we're generally, we, we're usually generous on whichever street they have the most frontage. It's twenty percent of that, and then you can split it into how many signs you want. Um, it does max out at two hundred and fifty, so using their largest facade, it was over two hundred and fifty square feet. So two hundred and fifty is the max they could
Okay.
They're permitted.
Okay. Um, with that, I mean, I don't, I don't know that any one side of this, of the, of the building that has signage on it seems obnoxious to me because they're splitting it up over three sides. Uh, so I don't have a major problem with the signage. Um, I do agree, this is, man, this is a great use for this difficult site. Um, and uh, having lived and worked uh, for several years in Pennsylvania, New Jersey and Delaware, uh, where a lot of these are, um, they do a very good job maintaining them and keeping a clean uh, and uh, just good-looking store, so I think this is a, a good plan.
Okay, yeah, I like it too. I don't have much more to add. I'm on the fence too about the signage. Um, there's a lot of extraneous signs on the building as well, which are probably unnecessary. They're probably necessary for their business model, but uh, most of businesses always want more signs, so I've, I feel a little uncomfortable approving it because then I think it backs the staff into a corner every time somebody wants additional signs. Almost always, they have a excellent, outstanding reason for the more signs, but where do you draw the line? So I guess I'd lean a little bit more towards shrinking it down some. I do appreciate that rear entrance, but yeah, I think the signage could maybe be shrunk down some. I do like, Mr. Gothard, I do like that super angled canopy, so I hope we don't change that too. That's all I have. It's a great project, looks terrific.
Yeah, again, I think in support, similar to the other commission members, um, you know, the signage I do think need to get, if not in compliance, at least closer to compliance. Uh, you know, the wood grain signs are nice for their business, but you know, that, I don't know if you eliminate those five, all of a sudden, they might be in compliance, you know? And I know it doesn't tell the story maybe as much as they would like, but at least they can still, you know, telegraph and sign their, their business and their, their logo. You know, the other things are, you know, I think the motion should speak to the faces of the retaining walls, so it's not just a poured-in-place concrete wall that's twenty-eight feet tall. It should have some architectural feature to it or a texture, um, and/or color. And for public safety of the casual person that may be there, that fence along the south and west, I think are pretty critical, in my opinion, too. You know, if it was a two-foot wall, might not be a big deal. Twenty-eight feet's a heckle fall. So, um, those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I think that's a really good catch on the street Beechmont-facing retaining wall, looking like something other than just a wall. I'd miss that, but I'm completely in agreement there. With regard to the signage, I feel like I'm not in agreement with my commission members. I think the signage is fine, and I actually feel like we're punishing them for, you know, providing good quality signage on their, you know, convenience store, whereas the alternative is a bunch of junky-looking temporary signage that never gets taken down. And I know that's speaking out of terms of our zoning regulations, because we do need to control things, but I like this alternative much better. And similarly, I'm a big fan of the 10-foot wide parking spaces. And I would love to see you keep them versus adding one measly parking space to this site. So I would...
We're okay either way.
Yeah. I don't want to change your plan for one space, because that, I think that extra width helps so many more people than one space will help people. But other than that, those are my comments, and I'm pretty in favor of the project myself. If anyone would like to make a motion, we'll entertain it.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve case 1-2024 PUD for the Wawa at 5313 and 5331 Beechmont Avenue with the following conditions: One, that the parcels be consolidated; Two, that the lighting plan be brought into compliance; Three, that the dumpster enclosure be brought into compliance; And Four, that the retaining wall, any retaining walls that exceed four feet in height have a railing at the top. That is it. So for the rest of the members, I did not suggest compliance with the signage.
Yeah. Anything about the facing of the retaining wall that Mr. Gothard was suggesting?
Yeah, that it has some architectural element to it beyond a flat, cast-in-place concrete wall.
So just to clarify, you're not recommending a variance for additional signage in your motion? And also, the staff recommended a variant, two variances, one for the height of the canopy and...
So variance for... Variance for the height of the canopy, the parking, and the signage.
And the setback.
And the setback.
So you want to give them the variance, so they can keep the parking, as I say?
Yes.
Okay.
Sarah, do you feel like you've captured the motion?
Two things for wall signage.
Okay.
I'll second.
Ms. Baker? Mr. Dundras?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So just one quick item. Case 1, 1987, major modification for Chick-fil-A. There, in the resolution that was passed in June of 2023, there was a condition, condition number four, that stated 300 square feet from the yet-to-be-built portion of Building B1, and 684 square feet of proposed Building F shall be transferred to Building H to allow the size to exceed the previous limit of 4,000 square feet. So when Chick-fil-A went back to the property owner to get their consent for that, it was determined that there were some errors in previous resolutions and previous development plans. So in summary, Building F was removed from the plan back in 1995. Building B1, that was 7,389, was not constructed. Building H, 4,000 square feet, was a Chick-fil-A. So 300 square feet allocated from Building 1, 2006, and then the proposal would be 684 square feet from Building B1. So there is a proposed modification to that condition. If you are in agreement with it, and if you are, we will modify that resolution. And I can try to explain this better if I need to.
Please do.
It does warrant a diagram, but I...
It does warrant a diagram. So Chick-fil-A and the shopping center behind it were all one development plan that was approved back in 1987. And that development plan included square footages for all those buildings. Over time, with some of the changes to that shopping center, square footage was borrowed from one building, because they said, "We're not building that building, so we're going to transfer that square footage to another building." So one of those buildings was never built at all, which is Building F, and it was completely removed from the plan. But we were still referencing that in some of our old resolutions. There was a Building B1 that was identified on the plan, it was never constructed. So it's really cleaning up the language to remove Building F completely from that condition. We're not increasing the approved square footage for that shopping center, we're just modifying where it's actually coming from. And I have requested from the property owner a new survey, which they have declined to provide, to help clean all this up, because we're dealing with plans and modifications from 1987. So we're just... But if the zoning commission is okay to modify that condition, then if you say okay, then we'll modify that condition. It doesn't really change their plan, it doesn't change what was approved. It really is just the language of where the square footage is coming from.
Really doesn't change the total square footage.
It doesn't change the total square footage for that shopping center, right? It's just allocated from one building to another building.
Being, I guess, the old guy on the board that saw both of these, I have no issue with correcting the language, so.
Yeah, weirdly, I'm concerned they don't want to do the survey, only in that, like, is this a Jesus fish, you know, phantom? We're just going to keep pulling square footage. But I also approve the other one, so.
Well, based on how they care of the surface.
And ironically, this shopping center has not changed hands. It's under the exact same ownership as it was in 1987.
If I remember right, Building B1 was shown on the plan that we were...
Yes, it was shown, yes.
So that's there. I think the biggest thing is that F was removed from the plan. So if nothing, worst-case scenario, if F was there, it actually has more square footage that could be developed than what their plan that they say is the right one is there, right?
That's correct.
Well, it seems like if we went to do this, the punishment would fall on Chick-fil-A, and they're just kind of along for the ride, and it's disappointing. The owner won't kind of help us out here, but at the end of the day, it's not a, really not a change at all. This is where we're grabbing it from, so I think it would be fine to do. I don't see why not.
Okay, we don't need a formal vote, as long as we're in agreement. It's not a public hearing, so.
All right, great. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you all.